As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the town YouTube. We asked that when you're not involved in the current discussion to keep your cameras off and your microphone muted. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. Before you make any comments, please state your name and the street that you live on for record keeping purposes. And if this meeting gets interrupted, we will immediately into Zoom and send out a new link via email and then I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So I don't unfortunately, I don't have my agenda in front of me. See, can you announce the first item? Isn't the first item the? What's the first item?
It's the code revisions ordinance for council liaison alternates and updates to the building code.
Well, no, isn't it? Isn't it the consent agenda?
We're doing the work session first.
Oh, we're doing the work. Why are we doing that?
So I can make my compost recommendation, RFP proposed my recommendation on the compost proposal before the council votes on it.
Oh, excellent. Okay, so I want to turn it over. So if we're doing the work session first, then I'm turning it over to the council president to lead the to lead the meeting.
All right. Thank you. Welcome, everybody. And the first item on the agenda, as you may have gathered already, is the code revisions ordinance for our building code and also for the modifying the alternate liaison rules so that it's now may have an alternate liaison instead of shall have an alternate liaison is the change. Did anybody have comments on these changes? Kabeer, you had a comment?
No, I'm I'm I don't have.
I do.
Oh.
I have a comment. I'm sorry, I should have raised my hand feature. Can you talk about this alternate liaison business? I really I didn't find anything to read about it.
Okay. The code currently as it now is requires that we both have a liaison to a committee and ultimately it's on to a committee. And we haven't really been following that because we really haven't appointed alternate liaisons in the last year.
You may want to mute. I think there's some background noise on your.
You're right. I'm sorry. Sorry. Yes, you're right.
So we're now changing the code so that it now says shall have a liaison and may have an alternate liaison. So that that way we do not have to have a liaison unless we actually require it for some other reason. Ultimately, as long as we require it for some other reason. So that's the story. All right. And the changes to the building code are really to make the it consistent with the code as we have revised it. That's really what it's about there.
Yeah.
So any more questions on that? Yes, Kabeer.
All I was saying earlier, Robin, is that I went through and all of those look fine to me. And will we also discuss the stormwater?
That's next.
That's yeah, okay.
All right, so we have got no concerns with those changes and we can move it to the September meeting for vote. Everybody in agreement with that? Right? All right. We'll just do that consensus going ahead. Okay.
Well, we'll probably put that on the I think we can put it on the consent agenda, but we'll talk to Ron.
All right. The stormwater ordinance, I have some comments on myself, but also let's hear from other people. Kabeer, you clearly do have a comment, so speak.
Just that, you know, I think it looks great. It's consistent with what we've been discussing. Just in the table, we are sticking with rain gardens. And I was wondering if we wanted to add other interventions per tier? And if there's any collect, I'm fine with that as an outcome, but then it's it's really about rain gardens. But are we collectively comfortable with that? And or do we add other elements per tier if we need to?
All right. Other comments first?
I mean, I guess I agree too that that maybe there should be other things that people don't want a rain garden.
Yeah. Okay. Debbie? You need to unmute now.
I did. I agree with that. I think we should have more alternatives listed than just a rain garden. All right. So I agree with that.
Yeah, that was actually, I was gonna say much to say myself, which is it is that not all properties have soil appropriate for rain gardens in fact, so will not work in some situations. So we do need alternates is what it boils down to for that reason. It probably needs a little bit more thought is what it boils down to there. So we're probably going to have to take that one off the September agenda for just now as we think through what we do for the small changes that are the ones that are above was 150 square feet. But not more than maybe 300 square feet and how we handle those. I don't think we should discuss it tonight, but maybe we should have another work session, agenda item at the September work session to to go through on that. Kabeer?
I think that that sounds reasonable. I just, if you could help us remember why we did the tiering again on this one. What was the original motivation? It's been a long summer.
All right. The the original reason was that every single permit approval that came through before we did the tiering put in dry wells. And we needed to put a break on that. And so tiering put the break on that. It doesn't eliminate them. What it says is consider surface basically landscaping first, and then if you can't do it by that alone, then go to dry wells as the next thing that that's the guts of it. And then there's a third level, which is rain tanks and et cetera.
So then we could, and we don't need to do it today. We'll do a separate work session, but in a way that language for each tier could be expansive. We could say any option effectively, right? Like we could be open to any intervention.
Right. I mean, I think that, I mean, I don't have the code in front of me, but I think it does pretty much do that on the EST, which is the first level of.
Exactly. Exactly. We could we could keep the same spread at the tier level.
We could certainly we could have a look at that, see if we can expand it that way. Yes, certainly. We can do that at the next work session in September. Yeah. Get that on the agenda. All right. Let's see. Next item is probably simple, which is no parking zone on Surrey between 5525 and 5527. And Jeffrey probably knows most detail on that, so he can just remind us what story is there.
Well, I can turn that over to to EJ.
Okay, yes. So this is in response to resident concerns is between 5525 Surrey and 5527 Surrey. There is just about enough space to park, but not really. And so occasionally we've gotten reports of people parking there and ends up blocking the driveways or being too close to the curb because of how small the spaces. And so just to make sure that it's very clear that people can't drive, can't park there, this ordinance would allow us to put a stop sign there or not stop sign, sorry, a no parking sign there, especially since currently all no parking zones and signs have to be in the code. And so this would add it to the code.
All right. Thank you. And remember, this was at the request of our constituent Esther Finkelstein. And in the meantime, you know, the staff has put up cones, so she hasn't really had the problem. And also, please note that the staff is also working on a comprehensive review of the our sign law so that we can make it less cumbersome and not having to put these changes in the code. So we'll be presenting something in the months to come.
All right. Thank you. So are we happy with this? I mean, do we need, is that? Yes, Kabeer? No, Shannon?
Yeah.
Yeah, good. Okay, all right. And Steve has joined us. Did you hear any of that, Steve?
Yes, got the last part. Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, then we can take that, move that on to the September agenda too. All right. And the last of the ordinance ones is the pool noise ordinance. And EJ probably has a better handle on this than me, so I'll ask him to present it. I've got a feeling for it, but go ahead, EJ.
Yes, so this was in response to the this last pool season that we're still currently in is currently during the swim season, especially there was concerns about what time we were starting for swim team meets and other swim team events like that, especially in regards to the nearby condominiums. There was some concern about skirting a bit close to the Montgomery County Noise Ordinance. So the council requested that Ron, our attorney, who is not here tonight, draft an ordinance that would specifically exempt just the pool from the Montgomery County Noise Ordinance. So we wouldn't run into any of those issues in the future.
All right, that's that's it. And Kabeer?
I can add two things there for the group. One is it's not unusual for us to exempt ourselves from certain county rules and regulations. I think there's at least one or two others that we have. And since Ron is not here, I can't tell you which ones they are, but he would know. So it's not unusual for us to do that. Two, this is, I don't know how we phrased it. I haven't had a chance to look at that particular ordinance, unfortunately. But we, I think the motivation here was for activities and events that are happening at facilities like the pool that are within our neighborhood. We we are exempting ourselves from the county noise regulation for those activities, not that we want them to not generate noise and be, you know, conducted with any restrictions or our noise. So it was to give ourselves flexibility, flexibility vis a vis the county rules and regulation. And and it came about, as EJ explained, with you know, the whatever four events that took place at the pool over the summer, which we interface with the with the Department of Environmental Protection on. And just just for everyone's comfort, we actually were barring one moment, one incident, we were within the county rules and regulation, just so that everyone is comforted with the fact that we did not indeed cross the noise threshold.
We do our best, in other words.
Yes. Yes. So just to give everyone the sense that this doesn't mean you can generate whatever noise you want at the pool. This is to give ourselves the legal flexibility vis a vis the county on the noise regulation.
Debbie, hold on a moment. I'm just going to read the change so that everybody knows what it is. It says here under noise control. Provided, however, that chapter 31B, which is the noise control ordinance of the county, shall not apply to the town pool and grounds located at their address. It's that simple. That's all it says. All right, Debbie? Unmute.
Here we go. I guess I'm wondering, what are the county hours that we're talking about? That we are looking to possibly exempt ourselves from? I'm sure we're talking about we had the the divisionals, which started at like 6:30 in the morning. So I'm wondering, does anybody know what the county's hours are?
One hour. It's just one hour. The whole point, the whole point, the whole point of this is that the right now the neighbors that are complaining about it have the right to call the county and say that we're in violation. If once we pass this law, then they won't be able to do that because we, as Ron pointed out, we have the ability to set our own noise rules. So that's all this is.
I get that.
To answer your question.
I'm sorry.
Just to answer your question, Montgomery County for their noise control ordinance considers daytime hours between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM. And so that's what they consider daylight hours. And so and then they have a specific decibel range that all noise has to be inside of.
Okay, I guess one of the things that I want us to always be careful about is being good neighbors. Okay, not only to the people on Warwick, but the building behind us. We don't want anyone to hate us. We want to always try to do the right thing. And I know we in the past have talked about, you know, possibly renting the pool out to one of the swim clubs and they would come in at 5:00 in the morning. And I always objected to that because of the time and the fact that we have our war with neighbors, really, more so than at that point the building. I know the swim team trips over, you know, the noise they make a couple of days in the summer annoy the neighbors at the at the at the building behind us. So I'd like to make sure we always don't take advantage of our of our of our not having to adhere to Montgomery County. Because I'd like in the neighborhood, all of our neighbors to to care about that, you know, about the noise for their neighbors around them. So we need to be an example.
Kabeer? Yes, I just Debbie, that's why I'm comfortable with this proposal because I was personally involved with the noise tests. And I conducted them and I conducted them with the Department of Environmental Protection. They sent someone over. And I can tell you with great confidence, even with the noisiest swim events, we were within the decibel levels of the, you know, so it was just the fact that there was activity in the morning hours on a Saturday. You know, that, as you can imagine, can be disruptive for some folks. And but in terms of the the rules, we were largely within compliance. I think this is what Jeffrey's saying that by exempting the the Department of Environmental Protection, if it's made aware of that, knows that we have exempted ourselves from those that specific ordinance. And it just gives us the flexibility in response to potential complaints that might emerge that are unreasonable. I think it just gives us that legal cover. As I was saying earlier, it cannot be an excuse to do whatever we want and whatever are at the pool. That just wouldn't be true. It was lesson for me too, that actually what I considered very noisy activity at the pool level as we walked towards the building up to the 10th floor, right? It we have amazing tree cover. So it really buffers the sounds as we go in that direction. So it was really eye opening. Just to flag that for the group.
All right. Any other questions of this one?
Well, just to add one clarifying comment backing going after Councilmember Kumar is we did not, we're not found in violation of the noise ordinance. We were just, we did receive several complaints, but as Councilmember Kumar said, we were largely in the in the rules. And so this is just I do not see us throwing all night ragers at the pool, hopefully. So I think, and then if there is concern, we can always amend our own noise ordinances as well.
All right. So Debbie, are you comfortable with that now? Okay, so are we all agreed then that we can move that to the September agenda for initial vote? All right. Okay, good. The next one is brown poles versus galvanized poles at the Dorset, Wisconsin intersection. And EJ gave us background on that in his comments. As I understand the comments, brown poles will take weeks and weeks to be delivered and galvanized poles are available immediately. And so it's really an advantage to have galvanized poles, especially if something happens to a pole. So are we, do we have objections to galvanized poles is really what they're asking? Is that it, EJ?
Yes, the to provide a little more background is the Maryland Department of Transportation reached out to us. And they are wanting to replace the street poles at the Wisconsin Dorset intersection. As the council president said, our poles are currently brown. If we wanted them to stay brown, it would take eight months, they said, to get them. And if something does happen, it would take another eight months. Instead, they have, they would recommend the galvanized poles where they they use widespread and are much easier to currently replace, but also in the case of an accident are also much more openly available.
All right. So any questions or comments on that? Yes, Kabeer?
Aesthetics. Aesthetically different in any way, that would be irksome to our persnickety neighbors around town.
Yeah, I mean, I think that it would, it's a different aesthetic, right?
I don't have a sense of these things. So I'm just wondering.
Like, it's like, it's, you know, it's kind of like dark brown, it blends in with the trees and, you know, all that. And so then you take that and you I don't know what color galvanized. I guess, is it like a steel color, gray steel?
Yes.
So I mean, it's definitely going to be not as attractive, I would say.
Yeah, right. These are the ones on Wisconsin, which I think they're all going to be called carbonized going down Wisconsin. So these just be part of a series running down Wisconsin. So they are the very edge of town. Whereas we'll have the brown pole still in town that we have now. So this is only on Wisconsin that this is happening, basically.
Got it. And and the real reason is just delay? Or is that, you know, are we choosing this because the others will take too long? Or is there a cost differential to?
There is no cost differential.
I mean, if if a pole is down, that's a real problem, obviously.
Understood. I don't have a way to make a call on this other than to make sure that you know, there is an aesthetic difference because this this will have a long term. This will be, you'll have this for a period of time. So if Councilmember Barr, as you are explaining, it'll be consistent with what's on Wisconsin, then that sounds reasonable. I just don't have a sense of where exactly this will be and what it might mean for from an aesthetic perspective, which the flag is of mine of number of our residents.
Any other comments on this one?
I think Jeffrey was trying to come in. Where is he?
Where is Jeffrey?
He may have lost connection. Oh, he's coming back.
I'm sorry, I take a while. What's the deadline on this?
Sir, did you ask what the timeline is?
Yeah, what's the time? What's the deadline?
Oh, for the decision, they didn't give us an exact timeframe, but they were very insistent that it's as soon as possible we get an answer to that.
But I think I think I think that we should have had someone from the state, it's the state, right? We should have somebody from the state to be asked questions of by the council. So let's let's defer this until we get more information because everybody's asking really good questions. And I don't I don't think that the council has enough information to make a decision.
Correct. And the other thing we could do is ask the residents who live, excuse me, most close closest to Dorset and Wisconsin intersection.
They're well, not only those residents, any all residents it affects, you know, so so definitely we'll we'll work on that. But thank you, everybody, for asking such good questions.
Something I'll get to the council is photographs of the current poles and then what the galvanized poles look like as well, so they can have a direct.
Yeah. All right. Yeah. Okay, so we'll wait for more information to fill that one. All right, moving on to number seven, that is the Montgomery County State delegation letter, and I do know something about that. So this is to do with the effort from the state and the county to increase the density of housing in towns like ours and neighborhoods like ours. And how does that interact with our building codes? Can we apply building codes to these multi-unit buildings in the same way that we apply building codes to single-family homes? And unfortunately, the way the legislation that allows our building codes is written, it mentions single-family homes as as it. And the way, when it was written then, there were only single-family homes. And so it was just put in the single-family homes because that's what was there. There was no intent to restrict it to single-family homes. So there's now an effort from most of the municipalities around to modify that text. It's called a technical amendment to the legislation to remove single family from that, so as it covers all homes in the towns, all residential buildings in the town. And that's basically what the letter is. I had some role in modifying it, which was to allow building codes that are no more restrictive than current codes for multifamily homes and but maybe less restrictive. In other words, a town may choose to modify building codes to make it easier to build multifamily homes. That change was required by the delegates in District 17 before they would sign on to it, in fact. So that is part of the letter. It doesn't change the application of building codes to us. And if we choose not to loosen our building codes for multifamily homes, that's fine. That that's that's built into legislation. So that's that's what it's about. And we're asked to vote for it, support this letter and contact our own state delegation District 16 to support the legislative change. That's it. So comments? Any thoughts? Yes, Kabeer?
The signatories are who exactly? Are they the governments or are they residents from these?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry that I'm, I don't know what's wrong with that. I'm sorry, Councilmember Kumar, go ahead. What were you saying?
I was just wondering, the signatories to this letter, are they residents from those towns or are they the governments of those towns?
It's meant to be from the municipality, so it is the legal authority for the municipality. There's mayor and council president.
Mayor Lane, Mayor Lane of Chevy Chase has taken the lead on this. And so this is sort of, I view this as a no-brainer because it's just regarding proposed legislation. And so we're just being supportive of the effort to consider some kind of changes that is just like a starting point. So so the the main thing is we want to get the delegation to introduce some kind of legislation. And once it is, then everybody will have a chance to comment on and testify and everything. But I but I think it's important that we sign on to this letters that state delegates from our county will introduce something. The fine points that don't really matter right now.
Understood, understood. Appreciate that.
But I hope that everybody will get involved. And I think that once you study up on it, if you have your own point of view, please, please again, get engaged and you'll have a chance to testify. You know, it's very easy to testify now with Zoom and all that. So and I'm sure that Mayor Lang will be following the legislation and giving us the opportunities to get involved. And Councilmember Heller's been involved with this too.
Yeah. So Debbie, you put your hand raised. So.
I was gonna, I always want to echo what Jeffrey said. And I think this is a no-brainer. I think we have to sign it. We have to be part of this group. We have a long fight in front of us. This is just a little piece and it's a really important piece. So I really strongly encourage all of us to agree to sign this letter.
Any comments from Shannon or Steve or Shannon?
No, I was just gonna say I'm good with it.
Me too.
Okay, then we can put that up for a vote in September.
This is the kind of thing where this this doesn't necessarily this doesn't necessarily have to be on the agenda. Everybody can just sign the letter or if you feel that you want to hear from constituents before you sign, it's it's totally up to you how you how you want to go. It sounds like everybody's willing to sign it. So we don't really need to put it on the agenda unless you feel that that will give it more strength, but I don't really think it will.
It would just open it up.
It's up to everyone. I mean, we're still gonna, you know, we're still gonna provide many opportunities. I mean, we're still gonna, we're, you know, we're still gonna provide many opportunities for our citizens to get engaged with this issue.
Yeah, I mean, the, the reason, I, I don't think we can give it to the residents without some explanation because most people probably believe our building code is already applied to all these multi-family homes and they don't necessarily. So this is, this is actually a bit technical. So I would be inclined, if, 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 but if, if you feel that Jeffrey, then we can just sign the letter and, and, um.
Well, except all, except all of you, I mean, we're all individually capable of signing the letter. It, it, the only difference is whether you want it to be a resolution by the council supporting letter. And I don't, I don't know that that's really necessary, but it's up to whatever you, uh, you know, it's up to what the council members think.
What, what do people feel? Do you want a resolution on this letter, which would make it a bit stronger?
I'm fine, I'm fine either way. I mean, is there a timeline on this?
They want it done by September.
The sooner the better, the sooner the better for.
Okay, then if, if sooner the better, then we go with option A.
All right, then. We're all in favor of it, so we can just let Irene Lane know and, um, that'll be good.
Well, no, well, a letter, we, we can, we can actually sign on to the letter. We'll, we'll figure it out. Everybody can sign on to the letter.
Ask her how, how she wants us to do that. Okay. All right, um. The next item is the Sustainable Procurement Policy and EJ can tell us all about that.
Yes, thank you. So this Sustainable Procurement Policy is a potential new policy for the Town of Somerset. This would serve as a companion to our current procurement policy when we are looking, uh, doing RFPs and looking to sign new contracts, uh, as the name implies, it's all about sustainability. Um, the impetus for this was actually, um, a group we've been working with called Sustainable Maryland, we're working with them on uh, reviewing our environmental practices and everything. And this is something quite a few of, of the other towns and the cities throughout the state and Montgomery County have signed. Uh, basically, it would take something we're already doing unofficially and codify it into policy, which is, uh, looking at sustainability factors of the people and products we use in town. Um, for example, in our, our RFPs, we already have a whole, uh, section of RFPs dedicated to saying how we're a sustainable community and will, uh, judge based off that criteria. Well, this actually establishes what that criteria is. Um, and so I'd be happy to go into more details about what it entails, but that's kind of the overhead view of it.
All right, um, again, he gave us the material so you can see all the elements in, in it. Uh, did, did people see them? They are. Let's see. Oh, you didn't release his toxicity, waste generation, greenhouse gas, gas emissions, a whole list of them, human health impacts, use of local businesses, uh, use reduction, in other words, uh, product performance equality, uh, use life cycle, life cycle cost assessment. Um, there are a whole bunch of them. I'm not gonna go all of them. So that, that's the flavor of them. Uh, Kabir.
I was gonna say, we, I think we're largely consistent with what is being codified here. So comfortable moving forward.
Right. I mean, this is very much in line with what the Environment Committee had, did recommend and, and the, um, Equity and Inclusion Committee, right?
That still doesn't stop our staff from using gas-powered leaf blowers, which is a separate issue which we will.
We, we, we need to work on that a bit.
We'll work on that. Maybe ordinance, pass an ordinance.
I thought we had one. Um, anyway, anyway, uh, so, all right, all right. So I think we're quite happy with that. Anybody, any concerns with it? Okay, so if you want to move it forward for a vote to approve the policy, we can, um. Okay. All right, on to the next item. We're going through the agenda at a rapid rate here, which is, uh, the, the letter to Realtors. Um, and this is about a way of trying to let residents who are moving to the town know about the various permits that they need to, uh, uh, seek if they're making changes in the home. And EJ can go into a bit more detail on that.
Yes. So this is in response to something that we've kind of seen in the last couple of months is, uh, new people, there's a lot of houses currently for sale in town and new people moving in and um, there's not, it's not always necessarily clear, uh, that the Town of Somerset has its own rules and code that is separate from Montgomery County. And so that has, uh, caused some minor communication issues that I'm hoping and the staff is hoping could alleviate some of these issues. Um, it would basically just be something that we ask Realtors to, uh, provide to anybody they end up selling to that just says, um, that where you, where, has a link to our code and, uh, where you can find our building code, where you can find our tree code, that we have a historic district. And saying that if there's any, uh, if they're interested in making any alterations to the property, uh, we're happy to help them at Town Hall, uh, and so please reach out to us. Um, I have a draft letter in the town materials. The only thing that's missing is a disclaimer that I, that be added by Ron. Um, the only thing, Ron is just currently on vacation, so he hasn't, uh, been able to do that yet. So, um, yeah.
So I, I mean, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, council member. Go ahead. Me, go ahead.
I was just gonna say that while I do, I mean, I, I like the proactiveness and I like, um, you know, uh, I like kind of notifying like neighbors. To me, it seems like this is a little before, I mean, like this is a Realtor's job, in my opinion. It's like to understand the house that they're selling and I don't know that we want to make it seem more difficult. Um, and so to me, my, my vote would be to, um, you know, have that welcome letter kind of information when someone buys a house. It's my opinion.
Well. Okay, so that's a really good question. Now, first of all, this letter is not only for Realtors. This is really uh, also a letter for anybody that's selling their house, because not everybody uses a Realtor. Okay, and the reason, you asked a very good question because the reason why we need to do this is because the Realtors don't do the research that you're talking about and, and they, and they have no clue as to, uh, all the particular sections of our code that are important to people to understand before they buy the house. And, and the thing is that over the years, what usually happens is since I used to be a Realtor, people call me, you know, people will call me and ask me questions. And, and, you know, I'm not, that, that's not, that's not the right way to go about it. You know, like they'll ask me, they'll call me up and they say, somebody I have a client that wants to buy the house, will they be able to put in a second curb cut? Well, I'm not gonna answer that. You know, because that's like deciding a case before it's presented. So, so the idea was that we would have a letter, we'd have information sheet that's approved by the town attorney that is, is just basically highlighting the sections in the code they should be looking at. Because, because they don't do the job that you're talking about and, and they should be. That, you know, that's what you're paying for. That's what you're supposed to be paying for, Councilor Roback, a professional Realtor that knows what they're doing, but a lot of times they don't. So this is just trying to, to help.
Yeah, I, I just, so I want to like, kind of, I don't want it to seem like, you know, it's a difficult town to move into. And like that we've got this strict, you know, people kind of then will associate it with like an HOA. And like, you know, we're not an HOA.
I understand.
So that's where, it's like a fine line.
Point has been brought up before. Yeah, that's, you might want to look at, you might want to look at the letter and add some suggested language that softens it a bit. Okay, I'm sorry.
All right, so Kabir was first, so Kabir.
Uh, no, that was a useful, uh, discussion and, um, I was, I had a couple of questions for EJ. So EJ, did you, when, when who is, who we, who do we give this to exactly? The letter and the packet, who gets it?
Uh, this would be to, uh, Realtors or, uh, potential home sellers.
So it's the, which real, the person selling the house, Realtor, the seller's agent?
Yeah, so, uh, the idea is that when we see a for-sale sign in a yard, we would call the number on there and give them to them that way.
Okay. And then, and did we happen to, I mean, I think there are at least six, if not more, Realtors in town who are residents. Did we happen to chat with any of them in terms of, you know, uh, getting their advice on this? Uh, probably not, but I recommend my catch up with a couple of them at least to get, get a read on how we could implement this sensibly. Yeah, yeah, if it's easy to do.
I think that's a good idea. That's a good idea.
And then third is that I like, uh, what you said when you introduced this. But that's not exactly how you phrased it in the letter. Which is that the real motivation for this is to draw the distinction between our code and the county code. Right? That's the heart of this, that we're saying, look, do, don't forget, there is our code, which is in some place spaces distinct from the county code. When you do the next version of this, I, I recommend leading with that in a way. So and the other thing to Shannon's point, you may want to make it kind of package it in a welcoming sense. So welcome to the neighborhood. We're excited to have you, historic town, amazing things. Hey, our code is distinct from the county code in these ways. Have a look at this. So it's just how we present it in a, in a welcoming tone, uh, would be my, my two cents.
All right, Debbie.
Um, I, I think this, this packet that we're putting together letter is a no-brainer. It is something we really need. And I think we can do all the things that, you know, Kabir just said and, and Shannon just said, make it welcoming. Make it so, hey, here's another piece of information. If you're gonna move into our neighborhood, we want to help you. We, you know, we're there for you. And here are the things you need to know. So I, um, I think we should do this and then we should probably send, put it on our, our, our town, um, website. And we should let our neighbors know, our residents know that this information is available once it's, once it's ready. Because let's say I was gonna sell my house, I wouldn't necessarily use a Realtor. In fact, I wouldn't use a Realtor if I could help it. And this would be good for me, you know, to make sure that I'm, I'm, I'm presenting well to anyone looking at my house. So I think this is a great, a, a great thing to do.
Steve, any reactions?
You're muted, Steve.
All right. Yeah, I fully support, um, doing, doing this. Clearly, we've had issues with with both real estate agents, contractors and new residents who are unfamiliar with our code. I think it should be on the website. I think the only thing we need to be cautious about is being too particular in a letter. Because if the letter then becomes uh, separate from or disconnected with our actual code, that could cause unintended confusion.
Great point, great point. Thank you, Steve. Yeah, right. The, 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 the big problem is when people are unaware of our building code and we've seen that recently, um, with somebody, um, where that happened. And so it's trying to minimize, find ways to stop that happening. It's really, this is one of the ways we can do to try to stop that happening, get, get that out. We should probably also have copies of something similar to that at the newcomers party as another way to, to, um, make that happen. Um, maybe we, you know, Kamar was one, he had some suggestions that he sent to all of us too, that he might be here and he might want to talk about them. Um, but the idea is we need to minimize this resident lack of awareness that we have building codes. That's the challenge. All right, so where are we?
I think I better Wi-Fi now and I missed what Steve said about what's the only thing to be cautious about.
We're not particularly in this letter that would create a conflict with our code, was his point.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's why we're having the, um, the town attorney review. And I, what I would suggest is that, is that, um, if three of you agree that we, we introduce this in September, but in the meantime, people can can review it and, and write some suggestions and maybe EJ can incorporate those into a draft. Because I think there are a number of residents that are interested in this, especially the group that, uh, proposed a welcome letter like four or five years ago.
Right.
And they might have their own input into it.
All right, so we need three people at least to move it forward. Um, so Debbie is in favor of it, Kabir is in favor of it, Steve? Yeah, yes, okay. That's three people in favor of it. So yes, we'll move it forward.
My request to EJ would be to, to do another rev uh, for that packet.
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so the next one is again, EJ. So, um, it's how you arrived at the compost RFP recommendation.
Yes, thank you. So our current contract with Compost Crew for curbside reci, uh, compost collection service is currently set to expire at the end of this month. Um, the, this contract expiration is also set to, uh, be accompanied by a major switch in our curbside compost collection services, uh, back in um, earlier at the beginning of summer, the council voted to turn our composting program into, uh, opt-out versus opt-in. Very timely, so we were able to draft the RFP under the, under the assumption of an opt-out program versus an opt-in. Uh, so that any bids we got would properly reflect that. So, um, the town issued an RFP, uh, on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, that RFP was closed on July twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Followed our procurement policy, including notice being published on the E-Maryland Marketplace Advantage website, Maryland Municipal website and the town website. In addition, notice was sent out to residents via the weekly announcements email, but email blast. I, I wanted to note, if you looked at the, uh, cost estimations, this just served as a baseline. I did say only two hundred homes. Um, I thought that'd be a good, uh, baseline, though obviously more, or just more households participate, the cost would rise. Uh, we received in the end two different companies, uh, proposals versus compost crew. And the second is another, uh, company called Monster Organics. Uh, the two full proposals can be done in the material, but they just give a very high over. Uh, for compost crew, the monthly cost per household in the first year would be fourteen ninety-five. They would also charge a one-time, uh, twenty-dollar bin fee. If a bin was returned, we would get a partial refund of twelve dollars. The fifth year, just to show you, at the end of the contract, would be seventeen forty-nine per household. Uh, in total, assuming the two hundred, uh, bin deliveries, the first year cost would be thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty. And the fifth, forty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-six. And with Monster Organics, for the first year, the monthly cost per household would be sixteen dollars. Uh, notably, they would not charge a bin delivery fee. Uh, and in the fifth year, the co, uh, contract would be eighteen eighty-two for thirty-eight thousand four hundred in the first year and forty-five thousand one hundred and sixty-eight in the fifth year. Uh, my official recommendation is that the council move forward, the proposal submitted by Com- Compost Crew. Overall, while there is a cost difference, I do find it, uh, somewhat negligible. Especially when you consider that even assuming the two hundred bin deliveries, uh, Monster Organics would be slightly more affordable the first year, but by the fifth year, we would actually be saving more with compost crew. Uh, in addition, there's not, since they're all, they were meeting a specific RFP requirements, uh, there's not much difference in the actual service. Uh, so besides the cost, my primary basis for the recommendation is familiarity and references. Compost Crew already serves the town, they're familiar with the town. And the town has cultivated positive working relationships at Compost Crew, Compost Crew, primarily with Alan Van Order, who has served as Somerset's primary contact. They've also, uh, have been very open to doing other events, uh, most notably, uh, for me is when Alan was, um, attended the Be in Compost Forum set up by the Environment Committee. Additionally, they're very active in this area, uh, Town of Chevy Chase, Martin's additions, College Park. Uh, all in here in Maryland, use them, Alexandria in Virginia uses them, and then DC has done, is doing a pilot program with them. Uh, so they're very experienced with working with local governments, while Monster Organics has not done a program of this scale yet. Uh, their clients have been a bit smaller. So that is my recommendation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. So that is my recommendation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have some questions.
Okay, Debbie, you start.
I am wondering if any of our residents have complained about their service.
Yes, so at Town Hall, I would say we've gotten very, very few. Um, overall, I would say the only uh major complaint that I've known we've received was for um a busted bin that compost crew did replace. But overall, Town Hall has not heard many complaints from compost uh about compost group.
Yeah, I think the only challenge has been sometimes when a new person signs up, it takes a little while for the them to actually.
Yeah.
Hard service.
Yeah, I I call myself a crazy composter. But I have to tell you, I have consistently had bad service from the compost crew. And I have complained to them, I have taken my issues to them. And they are just like dips deep sixing me. I don't even have bags for my bin. Okay, it's been about three weeks now I've been requesting bags. And, you know, I want to scream at them and say, you know, I'm going to be voting on your contract. Get me some bags, but I don't do that. I just, I never say anything. I just keep writing notes and saying, can I get some bags? Can I get some bags? And um I just wondered, maybe I'm just, you know, the odd person out, but I um I what I worry about is I read, when I read their their proposal, is how big they're getting. And I wonder, you know, I I'm worried about a five-year contract. You know, because if they're really getting so big, can they really handle this? Will our service get, will my service get worse? I don't know. Are other people not complaining? I I I don't know, but it's been terrible for at least a year, and I never complained to the town hall. I guess I always took it directly to, you know, compost crew. So that's all. I I I'm not going to vote against it. I just wondering.
Well, wait a minute. This this isn't the vote. This is the work session to decide to discuss the recommendation. And you might decide that you wanted to go out again, or you want to continue to negotiate or all that. So don't feel like you're, I mean, I think there's a little bit under the gun. EJ can elaborate, but there's still, don't feel that you're pressured to 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 approve what he recommends.
Okay, thank you.
And I will know um for our special council meeting that's following this work session, uh Alan Van Order will be joining the Zoom to answer any questions. So you can doctor him as well in a couple of minutes.
Right, yeah, I mean, I I had a couple of points. Um, I was looking at the new sustainability criteria and trying to see they work with the two proposals. And actually, that's interesting. Um, Monster uh Organics are using electric trucks, which is indeed uh more sustainable than the uh ICE vehicles that compost crew is still using internal combustion engine vehicles. Um, so that's a plus for for them. But uh they are based in Springfield, Virginia, which is not a local company, whereas uh compost crew is based in Rockville, and they very much are a local company. Um, and so that's a plus for them under the sustainability criteria. So in fact, the criteria pool in different directions, all that. Um, where I see the advantage in compost crew is that they can do this job. Um, we know they can do this job. They've done it in Somerset previously. They're doing it in other communities. They're doing it for the Montgomery County now too. We know they can do this. Monster Organics has only been in business two years. We don't know that they can do this job. We're about to expand our composting with with um opt out. We want a company that we know can do this, and that's why compost crew is here. Uh, Steve?
Uh, thank you. Yep. Um, I I guess I have some questions about the RFP and how we structured it and whether there's some flexibility there. Because as you noted, Robin, we're looking to expand the composting service in the town. The two hundred households that was in the RFP was a notional figure, but we certainly would like to get up, you know, we're going to be paying for a hundred percent for some period of time. Like to actually get up to, I don't know, eighty or ninety percent, I would guess. Um, so I guess my my question for you, EJ, is did either of the offers were the, I don't know, one, were they asked, and then two, did they provide any sort of tiered pricing? So that if we went from two hundred households to three hundred households, well, then the additional households would only be, I don't know, ten dollars per household or something. Is there any difference?
No, there's not. And so I do want to clarify that while in the price estimation specifically, I did use that as a baseline. The RFP itself did go into detail about this being an opt-out compost program where at the beginning, we're expecting over four hundred homes. Uh, and it will be the entire town. So uh they, the RFP was written with the opt-out, opt-out composting in mind. But no, uh, this would be a the flat costs.
Is 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 the is the charge that compost crew is is billing to the town, fourteen ninety-five, less than they are currently billing to the town? Do you know that?
I can.
And to clarify, Steve, your question, you're saying could they have proposed first two hundred homes at this price? The next hundred homes at a lower price to that price?
Yes.
And then a nine hundred homes and even lower price to that price?
Right.
Could they have proposed something that given that we're giving them, you know, four hundred whatever homes um in this new contract, correct?
That's yes, that's exactly what I was asking.
Our currently, my track is currently, I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, no, you go ahead, you go.
I was gonna say our current contract is uh currently twelve eighteen for this last year.
It is, but that's probably because of other costs, all right?
I think EJ, you had told us at some point, maybe at the last meeting, that we want on getting a better unit price, if I'm not mistaken, right? Like it wasn't the same unit price as the previous contract.
So can you repeat that?
Uh, to Steve's observation, that are we, are the economics here better at the unit level, given the expansion in homes and the broader business we're giving them? I believe you had either alluded to, I have this in my head, that you had said we were not getting a better price.
I think that's correct.
And and we were comfortable with it, given the nature of the service and overall size of the contract, but I just, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think that's what I recollect.
Yes, that is correct, yes. I I didn't say that.
Right, that to to clarify, I I understood that the current contract did not provide any scaling. I was asking whether this new contract asked for it or made it possible for the off- offers to provide. And yes, it doesn't really matter. At the end of the day, they just provided a flat, flat amount. But for budgeting purposes, we need to budget a lot more than thirty-eight thousand a year.
Yes.
And EJ, to Debbie's point, did we say five years in the RFP?
Yes.
So they responded with that duration already specified. So we can't change it now to three years. Or can we?
We could, uh, if Compost Crew would agree to it, yes, that's uh in it, or there's a, we can make it a three-year contract, or uh we could make it three years, and then optionally, we could add the next two years on. Uh, it would be kind of just dependent on what kind uh compost crew would agree to, but those are options.
I just offer to the group, I mean, hearing both Debbie and and Steve's comments, maybe we shorten the duration of this contract. Give us more optionality to do it for three years.
Well, we're still in the work session, we're not.
Yeah, yeah, in the in the sense that when it comes to approval, we've sorted that out.
But yeah, I want to hear, I, that's a great question about the time period, Kabir. I think I want to hear from Ron as to whether even with the five-year contract, we have some sort of an opt-out if we wanted to. I suspect we do, but I'm not sure.
Well, has he, I, has Ron reviewed the the proposed contract, EJ?
Yes, yes. Um, he had no particular comments. Uh, though to be fair, I did not ask him uh that question. Um.
But that is, but I mean, that is a valid question, and I'm wondering we're, they're going to roll up, do doesn't the contract go month to month? So we're not really under the gun to decide tonight, right?
Uh, we've been, uh, this month was month to month. Um, originally, it was set to expire in at the end of July, but we did a one-month extension. Uh, I could see if they would do another one, but it does not go immediately month to month, no.
So I I think, but but the council uh in their in 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 their wisdom could could just decide that tonight. And if if for some reason, if that's what you want, I mean, I would say that's an option for the council. If you're if you're not comfortable making the decision tonight to come up with some other alternatives, and then if they, for example, if if they said they wouldn't extend it for a month, which I highly doubt. But if they did, then we could have a special council meeting in the next few days to vote on it. So but but as I was saying earlier, I don't want you to feel you're under the gun, and I want to make sure you have enough information to make a vote and and I mean, that's the point of having work sessions and process. Because everybody's asking really good questions.
I mean, just to be clear, I I think, EJ, from my read of it, it seems like it's a well-run RFP process. I think the recommendation adds up. I just wonder whether we give ourselves some optionality by reducing the duration of the contract. That's all I'm wondering.
Yeah.
But we could achieve that by what Steve was observing, which is we could sign a five-year. But in uh under the assumption that we have the legal ability to uh discontinue before the term, which I don't believe so, but if there is.
So what advantage do you think giving us that optionality would give us?
Well, I'm picking up that there could be challenges with their service, they're scaling up. You know, five years does now in retrospect seem like a really long time. I'm, you you made the observation that other companies emerging that are uh, you know, we might consider taking seriously down the road. Um, so for all of those reasons, not not as a, sorry, just to be hundred percent clear, if anyone freaks out, I'm fully in support of composting and providing the composting service perpetually. I just was given the questions rate about compost crew. I wondered if it gives us some of optionality. Go ahead.
And uh, there is in the contracts we use for the town, the country use for town, uh, there is a clause that clause that we are allowed to terminate the contract for convenience or for cause.
Okay.
Oh, in other words, it's an operating service, we can terminate it.
So that, so does that satisfy you, the council or how or the others that are?
I'm okay with that. Um, that we do have a way out. I'm okay with, because I do worry about them scaling up so big and and all around town, not only with us, but it sounds like they've really just boomed. And um, you know, I I do have my concerns, and I want to be able to opt out if we need to, you know.
Well, also, you know that the county is likely to go in the next few years to composting.
Yeah.
On this every jurisdiction in the country. And there is possible that other uh companies will come into the market.
And and it is obviously true that the current companies are going to be expanding to the whole state, and in fact, compost crew does have um I think three contracts from our county for pilot programs in areas of the county, so.
And I think, yeah, and and I think to Steve's observation, I I suspect, given what you just said, Jeff, for unit cost will probably come down. So why lock ourselves in uh to these costs over time? So as long as we have that optionality, I I haven't reviewed the clause. I think Ron's view would be helpful. I think that would be wise, considering everything we've just surfaced here.
Um, yes, I I I agree. If uh, I don't know how much to sell, I could read the clause if that would help at all, just so we all had a general, you all had a general idea of what was in it.
Is this an item with uh for our council meeting coming up?
Yes.
Yes, tonight.
I see, I see, I see. Okay, I get it. I get it. Okay, okay.
So so the question for the work session is whether uh you want to keep that on the agenda uh for tonight?
Yeah, we can approve it.
Yes.
Empowering the the manager to negotiate and clarify in the finalization of the contract, right? Or do we?
Again, why does it, again, we need to specify what it is that we're asking him to negotiate on. What is it that we want?
Uh, the duration and 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 confirmation that our ability to opt out if we do five years.
Well, he is coming tonight. So so when when, and it's not on the consent agenda, so he will be able to present, and then you all will be able to ask him about these options.
Okay, we can do it that way.
So the only question now is whether you want to do that tonight or you want to wait.
Right, I mean, I'm I'm not entirely happy with your 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 suggestions over optioning, because I think we've got those controls in the contract already, Kabir. That's that's the point. Um, and the point about a five-year contract is that it allows them to establish employ employ people for those five years. Shorter-term contracts are harder in that sense. Um, it also gives the town those five years of service, which means we don't have to produce RFPs as frequently. Um, so there are some concerns the other way. Um, but let's hear from Alan Van Order and get his reaction to, yes. Um, all right, so any more discussion on this? We're going to vote on it or consider it anyway during the special council meeting following.
Well, and and a majority of you wants to move forward with that, correct?
I think we all do.
Yes. Yes.
All right, all right. Okay, so the next item is one that I asked to be put on the agenda, which is the idea of a gift fund. And um it it is simply uh that we set up in our accounts in the town a gift fund so that residents may put money in that. It's usually for a specific purpose. So in other words, that there's a target for it. Um, one idea a couple of years ago was for um a natural playground, which is sort of built out of logs and things like that, and there was a movement in PNRC for that. But it costs quite a bit of money, and a way of doing that without tapping the town budget so severely would be, in fact, have a gift fund that would allow us to residents to contribute.
Okay, so so let me just elaborate a little bit. First of all, remember, uh, Mr. President, there's there's two issues here. The first is the gift fund idea so that um residents could contribute to the town and then um enhance, you know, the budget. And um some time ago, you know, I I spoke, other other towns have um this type of fund, such as the city of Tacoma Park, and 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 I know this is an area that uh Councilor Kumar is familiar with. So so the um, one of one of the ideas is that we would set up a fund at the community foundation so that when citizens uh contributed to this, they would be able to take a tax deduction. And I had spoken a long time ago to Anna Hargrave, who's the executive director, and she said she would be willing to come maybe to a future work session to um discuss some of those options. So um, that's what I would suggest, if that if that's of interest to the to the um council as a way to um address this uh excellent proposal by by the council president.
Well, with um comments, uh Kabir again.
Uh, I'm just raising my hand. I'm happy to go last. So if you'd like me to go last.
Okay, if 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 anybody else, yeah, all right. Uh, Steve, are you still on? Any thoughts on it?
Yeah, we discussed this before. I think it's a good idea to have have this capability in place.
Right, um Debbie?
I'm actually not sure how I feel about this. I got to think about it. I thought when I saw gift fund on the um agenda, it was so we could have a gift fund for our our town staff at, you know, Christmas time.
We already have that, yeah. Well, that's another issue that we'll be coming up with in the future.
Okay, but I don't know, do we need to have a fund to enhance our budget? Because that's a question that we, I that just, I don't know, we can answer that tonight, but do we need? Because that's a question that we, I, that just, I don't know, we can answer that tonight, but do we need such a fund? What are our needs? Why are we doing this?
My 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 logic was um that there are particular capital projects, if you will. Uh, that um are quite expensive and we haven't put in our budget. But the residents want them anyway. Um, and one example was nature playground, for example. Um, it might be a pool event that, you know, the teams want to organize, for example, you know, and. You know, we we haven't put money in that year and they want it right away. A gift fund could get them there. So it it, there are different ways in which it could be used. Uh, one of the things we need to think about is whether we, the council, need to approve of the, whatever project it is before we we set it up as a gift fund. But that's, that's principle of it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, Shannon, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, I mean, I think that, I mean, I think that it's great to, you know, if if someone wants to donate money or something um. To the town and do something, but we just don't want to be beholden to one person's um wants of our town. And, you know, I would feel like, you know, there could be groups that have special interests of, you know. We want to do X Y Z for the pool, and so we're gonna go and put all this money into the pool fund and you guys have to execute this. And uh, you know, I think that we want to make sure that, um, you know, there's enough oversight of it that we're. You know, that people don't feel like they can just drop in money and we'll, we do what they want.
Well, that's that's right, and that's kind of what the point I was making about, how much do we want to review this and Kabir?
So to uh appreciate uh this discussion, I think as Jeffrey was saying, this is. If I'm remembering correctly, the revenue committee had recommended this, and there are two parts to this. One is, I think there was someone in their will that they, you know, had don't be quest.
We still haven't spent that money.
Yes, and and so we we may receive funds and we need to create a structure in which we receive funds. And that ideally they are in a, in a tax exam scenario, and so.
I I don't think we've ever spent that money.
Yes, so Jeffrey's uh recommendation to have that person come and speak, I think, makes a lot of sense. Just to investigate that as a structure, so we can execute against that. I think the second piece, to your point, Shannon and Debbie. Uh, that's where I think Robin's suggestion that we set up the rules around this. And set up the framework around it, because it shouldn't be. Uh, effectively uh for agenda and priorities that are uh disconnect from the agendas and priorities we've established. As the council and as the mayor's office, so it would be to enhance the agendas and priorities we have already established. So, you know, so we would have to create some structure around this. But um, I think it's a great idea to move forward and investigate, so I'm all in favor of that.
Yeah, I just, I, you know, I don't know if this will serve a, a sample size of one. And then we're, you know, kind of creating a lot of busy. Right, and like, you know, so, so we have, you know, our resources going to set up rules and stuff where we don't. You know, really need to at this point, like, I I'm not, I'm not sure I unders, I I get it all.
Sorry, sorry, go ahead. No, no, you finish, I'm sorry, I thought you.
I know, I'm done, I I just, I'm not sure that we need this. And I I don't know if we need, I don't know if this is a priority right now for our town staff to kind of get everything together. In order to execute this when, you know, we, it might not be necessary, because we don't have anyone um giving us money.
I think, I think this is dangerous, actually. I think it um, it might entitle a few to push for the things they want. And and then the council may have to fold and say, okay, well, they've they've given all this money, we have to go with it. It's, i- i- it's, we have a budget, we collect our taxes, we seem to be a healthy neighborhood in terms of money. I um, I really strongly suggest that we not do this right now, maybe another time we can talk about it. I just, I I'm afraid it's gonna bring out the haves and have nots overall. So um, that's my two cents.
I think, but there are two parts to this, right? The one part is we are receiving money and we haven't figured out a structure to receive that. I believe someone has.
Yes, we have, twenty thousand or something like that.
And it it was, it was. It was um, a former council member who died probably five years ago. And she left the money in her will for, to the town.
So we need a structure for that anyway, and we should have that. And I think there is the other piece, which I hear you, and I would only say that we would only do this if we, if they were. Inconsistent, it was consistent with our agenda and priorities, so it wouldn't be for special projects.
Right, and that's, that's like your old council oversight often, that that's where we.
It has to be, uh, otherwise it wouldn't work. Uh, but I think that's what we investigate, right? Uh, and it may be not right away or for the next meeting, but I'm in favor of figuring this out for sure. If if folks are comfortable in the newly imagined budget, finance, revenue and budget committee. As we had discussed, this could be a committee exploration, so it doesn't fall on the shoulders of the staff. If folks are okay with that, but also happy to do it as a, as as folks see fit.
So are there at least three of us wanting to take this forward? I am myself.
Yes, I I think Kabir's suggestion is is great.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll invite uh Anna Hargrave to come and talk about the options. And I, and I also wanted to bring up, um, this is something we actually talked about. Years ago in our historic orientation for this council. Um, re- remember um about. Maybe ten years ago, council repeal rewrote the town's gift policy for for um. For items and and so now is the, and and right now the gift policy. Only provides for, I think, um. Benches and maybe the, those um. Those poop, those dog poop boxes, but but. Nothing else under the policy is supposed to be accepted as a gift, and we've had situations where stuff has been given. That um. A a variance, an exception to the rule was made and and um. Re- remember a couple of years ago when someone donated some kind of um game to the, to the pool. And 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 it was just, um, the council didn't really accept the gifts, but they, but they um. Allowed the manager to just receive it, because the whole issue is. So let's say somebody wants to donate a pool table to the pool. And then it's accepted, then it becomes a fixture that needs to be main, then it becomes a, there's an expectation that that is a service. That's being provided and it has to be maintained. That was the, the the reason this whole issue came up was because the batting gauge got donated, you know, years and years ago. By basically by some people that didn't want it on their yard anymore. So then once we, we, it was accepted, then it became a service. And there's an expectation it had to be maintained. At a great cost, especially when a hurricane blew away most, most of it. So, so that's why we have to be very careful and and pick gifts that fit. They accept gifts, someone to fit into the mission of the town. The same thing happened with the piano. I don't know if you, you all remember the grand piano, which I was a part of that gift. But it turned out to be sort of a nuisance. But then people wanted to keep it, the the few people that actually used it. So, so what I would suggest is that, but I do think that these kind of policies need to be reviewed on a regular basis. So what I suggest is that, is that the manager send out the gift policy to all the council. And at an upcoming work session, we further discuss it, because I do think that it might be warranted. That that certain games could automatically be accepted for the pool. Or maybe even some items for the tennis court. You know, it might be a cost-saving thing for us. So, so I think it is, it's a valid issue to to look at. And I'm glad that the president brought it up.
Okay, so the first thing is you're going to invite this person from the foundation to come speak to us. And secondly, um, Kabir is going to take it to the new budget and revenue committee to work over the idea.
And thirdly, EJ, will, there might be an updated gift policy. By the way, for what it's worth, EJ, Matt and I did revise it at one point, so it's somewhere in your folders. There should be an updated one uh in draft form, so hopefully not additional work uh for you.
You mean the gift policy about what gifts the town would automatically accept?
Yeah, Matt, I think, uh, Jeffrey, last time when we went around this. We had identified that it only covered benches and the poop stations or whatever.
I think that's.
I think we expanded the language and cleaned it up a little bit, so there should be a draft. And if you you don't find it, I'll probably be able to find it in my.
But I mean, this is a way to, to uh combine the these two ideas. Because let's say that someone gives. A game at the pool that the council decides would be an excellent permanent fixture at the pool. As opposed to something that comes out of the blue. That.
Exactly, exactly, it it. That would be the ideal part.
Yeah, I mean, for example, maybe we could put in the gift policies if somebody wants to donate. A new diving board, once, once it it um, it it needs to be replaced. That that then that would just be an automatic thing, not, wouldn't have to be wasting a lot of discussion on it, or even the chairs. I mean, maybe, maybe people, you know, there's the current chairs that we bought are only good for what, six or, I don't know, four, five, six years? And they're expensive, and maybe the next time we need new chairs, we can just say, does anybody want to donate these chairs? Here are the specifications.
We'll get to street signs.
It gets into the whole issue. Of you that have been in the philanthropy world, like what is, you've all read that article, like what is a gift? And and some things are not really gifts, they're just items people want to get rid, want to get rid of.
Question for the group, do we roll into the council meeting or do we need to pause and?
Uh, actually, that that that, I was gonna hand that to Jeffrey for a question, we're running.
So you can adjourn and then we can start the meeting, yeah.
Can we start because the advertised time was seven ten?
Alan Van Order is coming presumably for seven ten and we're early.
The thing is, we, we can st- we can start the meeting. Uh, as long as we're in that twenty minute, we're within twenty minutes, remember, we have that. That we have that rule on there that that you you should show up twenty minutes in advance.
Work session.
Why don't we do the tennis one first if Alan isn't here yet?
Put her on the work session, all those in favor.
All in favor of our journey.
Okay, thank you.